It's 6:30 according to Verizon. The call to order, the special meeting for the Charter Township of Oxford Board of Trustees, Wednesday, August 24th at 6:30 PM. Could we all please rise and pay our respects to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Noting of the roll.
Noted.
First off, could everybody pull their mics forward and talk into the mic? Our recording secretary is not here, but we are recording it. And for OCTV, they can hear us much better. So please, just speak into your mic if you would, okay? How do we note the roll? Call or call the roll?
Roll, rolls noted. As President, if you'd like a roll call, we can do that.
Sure.
Trustee Colvin.
Here.
Trustee Noel.
Here.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Here.
Supervisor Curtis.
Here.
Clerk Wright, yes. Or here, rather. And trustee Charles.
Here.
And trustee Payne is absent.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda. Sorry, for a motion.
I'll move to amend the agenda with the addition to insert item 9B. And that would be for the Brad Dewey subdivision sanitary sewer engineering design fees. Move the other items down accordingly.
Curtis, B as in boy?
B as in boy.
Good. Would you repeat that, please?
Wait, 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 wait. Can we have a second?
Second.
Moved by clerk Wright, seconded by treasurer Ferrari. Rod Charles, you had a question?
Just repeat the number where you want it inserted, please.
9B as in boy.
Okay.
Well, that's where I have my problem. I would like to do that 9A before all the budgeting.
It is, it's right after the interlocal agreement. And then the budgets are after that.
Then the budgets are after that.
Am I reading that wrong?
I'll rescind my motion.
Or do we have to vote on that motion?
We have to vote on it now.
Okay, because right now we're going to have it here, right?
Yeah, I want it 9A so we can get them out of here.
What, add them interlocal?
The interlocal agreement is critical infrastructure planning grant.
You want that after this?
I want that as 9A. And then 9B is the budgets.
And then you want this as 9B instead of the budgets?
All right, we're mixing them up here.
The interlocal's already on there.
The interlocal's already on there.
He's talking about the sewer, the actual voting, have Jim do the work. So that's 9A.
Curtis' motion is to have that come in as B, these all move down.
Okay. Curtis' motion is for that to be 9B, the budget becomes 9C.
Correct.
You are correct.
I'll second my motion.
Okay. There we go. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, hearing none. Let's start off with public comment on items not on the agenda. Any public comment on items not on the agenda? Seeing none. Six, unfinished business. We have none. Item seven, the budget public hearing, truth in budgeting, the property tax millage rate proposal to be levied to support the proposed budget will be the subject of this public hearing. Anyone want to open the public hearing?
Make a motion that we open the public hearing at 6:34 on August 24th, 2022.
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Noel, the second by treasurer Ferrari. Any questions? Yes, sir.
In the motion, you're indicating what you're discussing in the public hearing.
Okay.
I'll be happy to amend that, to title it truth in budgeting. Item number seven on our agenda, the property tax millage rate proposed to be levied to support the proposed budget, which will be the subject of the hearing.
Curtis, is that the proposed motion? I can't get on.
It is not the proposed motion.
Okay, we gotta get this right. I'll rescind my support.
Okay. So, do you want to read that motion, clerk Wright? Or do you want me to read it?
Was the motion rescinded by trustee Noel?
Yes.
Seconded by treasurer Ferrari.
Correct. So, we're off to a good start tonight.
Sorry, guys, I usually read them, I'm just not.
That's all right. There it is up on the screen, John.
I moved open the truth and budgeting public hearing at 6:34 PM to discuss the property tax millage rates proposed to be levied to support the proposed budgets for the following: 2023 general fund 101 budget, 2023 fire department operations 206 budget, 2023 police contracting 207 budget, 2023 parks and recreation budget, 208 budget.
I'll second. You have a motion by treasurer Ferrari, a second by trustee Noel. Roll call? Oh, no, voice vote. Yes, roll call.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
And trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Okay, members of the public, are there any public comments to be made at this time on the truth in budgeting public hearing? Seeing none.
Curtis, can you go down?
All I can.
Here, Joe. I moved to close the truth and budgeting public hearing at 6:35 PM to discuss the property tax millage rates proposed to be levied to support the proposed budgets for the following: 2023 general fund 101 budget, 2023 fire department operations 206 budget, 2023 police contracting 207 budget, and 2023 parks and recreation 208 budget.
Second. I have a motion by treasurer Ferrari, a second by trustee Noel. Roll call.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
And supervisor Curtis.
Yes. Okay, the public hearing is done. Item number eight, the fire department. Chief Matt, you guys want to talk about this?
Sure.
Okay.
Evening, board. Before you, I have the proposal to request approval to purchase a new ambulance to replace our 2013 ambulance. This vehicle currently has close to 140,000 miles on it. Build time and delivery time on this thing, again, is over 300 days. So you're talking over another year, year and a half, and that's after they receive the chassis. Again, price increases are going so fast right now. Price quote that they gave us was $297,097, which does include the cot and the cot loader system. But they do not give an exact price on the Ford chassis because, again, Ford's not releasing their prices until October 17th. And at that point, when they do release the prices, all the ambulance companies and everybody will be hitting email like crazy, dropping all their orders for it. So that's why it's important that we get in line with everybody else, so we don't get closed out. At that time, there potentially may be an increase or potentially maybe a decrease. There is already an increase of approximately $3,500 built into it. And so in case the price does go up, that we would be covered. But if we have to do some change at that time, then we will readjust at that time. Also, as part of it at that time is when Ford announces their fleet rebate that they do give to the vehicles at that time, and that would be released at that time, too. So tonight, I'm requesting approval to purchase the vehicle, ordering it from R&amp;R Apparatus for a Lifeline ambulance. And it will be a 2023 Ford F-450 XLT chassis and with a cot and loader system included.
I moved to approve the purchase of a 2023 Lifeline Type 1 Superliner on a 2023 Ford F-450 XLT Superliner chassis with a cot and cot loader system from R&amp;R Fire Truck Repair, Inc. I further authorize chief Peter Schultz to sign the quote on behalf of the Oxford Fire Department.
A second.
The final cost of the Superliner to be paid through the fire department fund balance.
Second.
Very good, Joe.
I have a motion by treasurer Ferrari, a second by trustee Noel. We're trying to take the time up.
I'm with you.
I have one statement.
Pete?
Yes, sir.
We need to bring this September 15th to our meeting in Lansing. Just so that they know, we're waiting a year for a fire truck or for an ambulance at $100,000 or $300,000 maybe price.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Are there any questions? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
And trustee Charles.
Yes.
Okay. Got a ambulance coming. Item nine, new business, interlocal agreement, critical infrastructure planning grant. CJ Kironakio.
Good evening. Back in May, the township was awarded $100,000 local critical infrastructure planning grant from Oakland County. This grant, which represents the maximum a municipality could receive, will help fund the design of the sanitary sewer extension along M24 from Gateway Drive to Dunlap and through the four roads that make up the Brad Dewey subdivision. Based on Jim Sharp's March 2022 estimate, this grant will cover approximately a third of his design cost. In order to receive the grant, the interlocal agreement that you have before you between Oakland County and Oxford Township must be signed by supervisor Curtis and returned to Oakland County so it can be approved by their Board of Commissioners. So the resolution before you tonight is simply to authorize supervisor Curtis to sign that so that I may return it to Oakland County.
I moved authorize supervisor Jack Curtis to sign the agreement for local fiscal recovery fund distribution between Oakland County and the Charter Township of Oxford. This agreement pertains to $100,000 local government critical infrastructure planning grant that will be used to help fund the design of the sanitary sewer extension along M24 from Gateway Drive to Dunlap Road and along the four roads, Brad, Dewey, Ora, Roy, that run through the Brad Dewey subdivision.
Second. I have a motion by treasurer Ferrari, a second by trustee Colvin. I heard her first. Any questions on this motion? Seeing none. Roll call.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. And trustee Charles.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, item 9B. Can I scroll down to that one?
Uh, I can't.
No, that's the one we got here.
Yeah, it's on the packet.
Okay. Board members, in addition to the $100,000 local government critical infrastructure planning grant funds secured by CJ for the engineering design fees for North Area Sanitary Sewer Project that includes the Brad Dewey subdivision, additional funds are required for the design of engineering. The Water and Sewer Committee is recommending approval for the engineering design fees. The attached is a cost estimate and a map of the proposed sanitary sewer lines for the Brad Dewey subdivision, provided by engineering Sharp. One thing I want to tell you in here is this board has already approved the fees for M24. The additional amount is to do what we're asking for tonight is the part of the Brad Dewey subdivision only.
Correct.
So, I look for a motion.
I moved to approve an amount of $125,750. authorized Sharp Engineering to proceed with engineering design, topographical survey, and easement preparation, and negotiations for the Brad Dewey sanitary sewer extension project. The $125,750 amount to be expensed to account number 590-527-973.002, sewer extensions.
Second.
I have a motion by treasurer Ferrari. I have a second by trustee Colvin. Are there any questions? Yes, trustee Charles.
Just to make sure, it's just for the subdivision itself, it's not for M24, right?
This additional funds are just for the subdivision.
Okay.
Seeing no other questions, roll call.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Okay, item 9C, budgets. I'd first like to start off with, this is a budget workshop. And in the past, as you remember, last year, we moved to a BSNA reporting out of our budgets, if you will. And we would get to these meetings and have motions to approve things and never really sit down and work on what is needed. And I'm going to give you an example. We never budgeted for wages. Compensation pay this year is based on performance evaluations, the new performance pay. But we never budgeted the amount to a department and allowed the department manager to increase the pay of an individual. It was automatically put in a line item. So this is a fun balanced budget. And what we did this year was made some recommendations through clerk Wright, treasurer Ferrari, myself, Tim London from the building department. And we made some recommendations. Next year, during the workshop, we are going to have specifically talk about projects. What we have right now is we have a lack of a capital investment committee that should tell us what we should be spending our monies on. Chief, I need the next chief to understand that we should have capital expenditures or investment presentation or preparation for us throughout the year so we can budget and talk about it in the workshop. So the budgets you look at tonight, you are given, you were given two that are even newer than what was in your packet. It is the building budget and the general fund budget. And we're going to walk through these by stating what we felt capital expenditures should be for the township, taking funds from our audit report from 2021 and moving that money into an open fund balance. That way, we can use that money in the community to do some of these capital expenditures. So I'd like to start off with budget 1I, the general fund 101 2023 budget. If you go to the first line of the budget, 101, 000, 400, 000, the opening fund balance, we have a recommended fund balance opening budget of $823,500. A lot of work went into this, trying to figure out where we go. We have $1 million in ARPA money. We have entities in our community, the library, the fire department, the roads, the cemeteries that need this money. We have not done any investigation other than from the hip. Every budget session for the past 15 years that I've attended, somebody always got yelled at because they wanted to put some money into the safety path. Somebody would get, why you want to do that in a cemetery? Because it needs to be done. We have these funds and we need to do it. So this year, what we have done is proposed in the transfer from the general fund, you have to have it in there. So tonight, you see $823,000. The second line is what we will generate in current tax revenues and budgeted for 2023. This general fund balances revenues and expenditures. However, we would like to transfer $250,000 into the cemetery fund, 209. And if you go to, I believe it's the last, the second to the last page of the general fund, you'll see that proposed 2023 recommended, we have entered an expenditure of $250,000. There's over $1 million worth of work that needs to be done in the cemetery. Never in the past 15 years have we allocated enough money to even scratch the surface. We did a budget amendment this year where we moved $100,000 in to pave the road to stop the water from, or the gravel from running out onto Burdick Street. But we have walls falling down. We have trees that are dangerous. We have roads that are having eroded and washed away. So in this budget workshop, we would talk about, hey, our capital expenditure committee says we ought to add $250,000 to the cemetery fund. So you'll find that in opening balance. We would like to move $100,000 out of that money to the safety path fund. We just got shocked this past week when the bids came in, anywhere from $20,000 to $90,000 to just cut the branches and vines off this, off the safety path so you can walk on them. This isn't even a scratch the surface by adding $100,000. Curtis and I were going to go into business, but he's here, they're there. These monies are minuscule amounts of monies that we have the available funds for in our general fund without even touching ARPA. We ask for $300,000 be transferred from the general fund, which would be taken out of the audited fund balances and put into the fire department MERS. And we did a, we took the liberty already of adding that into your budget. You'll see it on a line item. A lot of these line items are put in under miscellaneous. For example, we want $90,000 for compensation for the township employees. In the past, the line items were increased by a cost of living. Now we're doing a performance pay. We've estimated the total payroll for the township over a year, and we've taken a percent, 10% of that total, and we put it in for a possible pay for performance wage benefit increase for 2023. If we don't use it, we put it back in the same balance. We also ask for $100,000 to the roads fund. $100,000 is just a scratch. I mean, it won't do much. But along with our tri-party funds, we can start applying gravel to roads that really need them. This year, we spent almost $300,000, $300,000 to gravel Coates, Hummer Lake Road, and West Drainer at the gravel to Baldwin. That's not even touching 10% of our road. So we're starting to do these workshops by saying, we need a capital investment or capital expenditure committee to come to, to come before the budget meeting and say, yes, all of our expenditures should be done this way. Do we have the funds in the audited fund balance? We put it in an opening balance and then move it into the accounts as needed, like our wages, changing and upsetting the apple cart. Each employee on the line item came to us and said, I'm not getting a raise this year? No, you may get a raise based on your performance pay, but we don't have it in the line item, wages deputy, wages deputy, wages administrator. And what we're doing is we're putting them in a miscellaneous, and as the department heads for their employees see a budgeted amount in the general fund, transfer to those departments, they, the department heads, through the pay committee, will apply a percent monies raise, compensation increase to the individuals. Now, that could be a monthly raise, it could take into consideration the retirement, it could take into consideration everything budget-wise. So these changes are only getting us to where we should have been years ago. Let me finish. How we came up with these funds, number one, we did not take the payroll increases for the building department out of general fund. We took them out of the building department fund on the audited fund balance report. So we're trying our best to get up to speed where we should be accounting-wise and ability-wise. The 90 for compensation, 100 for roads, $300,000 for MERS, $100,000 for safety path, and $250,000 I talked about the fire department, you'll look in the budget that we gave you back, we put that money in there, and it balances at revenue and expense. The building fund money, and that's what we have. Okay. Rod Charles, trustee Charles, you had a question?
As an example, the, there was a, at a previous meeting, we talked about the possibility of a 3% contribution to employees' pension plan. Would that be included in this concept?
No, we found out that we cannot do that. It's all in, everybody all in, all in for the same. It's different than what we were offered at the fire department negotiations. So we're not doing that this year.
Okay. Just a suggestion, might be good to communicate that in the future if we had a discussion and then we find out later on, other than, you know?
Yep, you're right. It would be, so.
Okay.
Make note. Thanks, sir. Any other questions before we get started? So for the general fund, I'm going to get started. Item number 9I, general fund. We have revenues and expenses. Danielle is here, working with her budgeteer, I call it. Total appropriations of $4,8,918, balancing revenue and expenses. During a workshop, all the proposals that I talked about, transferring money from the general fund would come out of here and go to the other fund balances. Are there any questions or concerns with that? Clerk Wright?
This will be approved at the September meeting? Is that the understanding?
Would you entertain it being approved now?
I, I would entertain it being approved now, but next year, we will have a workshop where we don't approve the budget on the night of the workshop so that we can go back. And if I want to transfer money to the Parks and Rec or the library, here we are, sitting in a room, trying to do that on a budget night workshop, and then go to approve it, it's, you really can't do that. It's cumbersome, you lose some things. We make our recommendations here tonight, then we approve the budget at our September 14th, September 14th regular board meeting. Now, if there are no questions or concerns with the recommendations that I've made, and there are no other trustee recommendations, we could entertain a motion to do that. Trustee Charles?
Quick question, have you surveyed other townships and what their process is?
Yes.
And what would that look like?
I went to the Orion workshop, and all it is, is a 30-minute meeting where they go through and they say, we need this here, we need this here, we're taking it from here, see you next month, and we'll approve it. So that's, that's what other townships do in the MTA recommendation is. So you can approve it, but it was done that way in the past to either save money for meeting expense, but it wasn't really talked about from capital investment in our community.
I moved to approve the recommended 2020.
I have a question here.
I'm sorry, let me finish with the questions first. Yes, clerk Wright?
Now, the employee evaluations still have to take place by the evaluation committee.
Yes.
So if this budget is approved, those evaluations will be recommended in September, the September meeting?
No.
October?
October.
October. So at that time, if this is approved and there's any adjustments, then you come back and amend your budget in October?
No. Because you've budgeted enough money, you have a line item that says miscellaneous in the general fund, that can come, that, those compensation funds can come out of there.
I understand that.
That's a line item. It's not the fund balance. We're approving revenues, expenditures. But if somebody gets, if you have $10,000 allocated for performance may, somebody gets two, somebody gets three, that's $5,000, you take the other five and you leave it in the general fund.
Yeah, we discussed that earlier on that.
Okay. You good with that?
I'll live with it.
And, and the reason we, we are going to live with it is because it's a drastic change from the past. A line item, this is not a line item budget. And the first thing you do is you look at your line item, and I look, I'm not getting a raise this year? Oh, you mean, we're not going to do anything in professional planning services? We have money there to do it. We can move in our department lines by line, but you can't move from the fund balance to the general fund without a without a meeting to approve that. Okay?
All right. Question down there.
Yes, Catherine?
I'm just looking at the difference between the 3,185,418 and the 4,8918. Is it the 250 for the-
I'm sorry. Okay.
I'm sorry, we had the amended budget versus the one that was in the packet?
Yes.
Difference in the numbers?
Yes.
Was it the 250 for the cemetery and the roads that you were speaking of?
It's, it's all of that except for the building department allocated funds for performance pay.
Okay.
It's got the road fund, it's got the cemetery fund. That's all the addition. And what that is, the difference is 823,500 dollars. Yes?
Okay. If the board does move to approve the general fund budget and the building department budget, please note that the amount in the proposed motion is not accurate in those two funds. You will have to reference the revised spreadsheet received this evening.
What is that amount?
The new amount?
4 million-
4,8918 dollars.
One more time, Rod?
4,8918 dollars.
Even?
Is that correct, Danielle?
4,8918 dollars even. Yes, sir.
4,819.
4 million-
8,918.
Run it again.
Perfect. I move to approve the recommended 2023 general fund budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at 4 million. It's 4008918, based on the property tax millage rate to be levied of 0.8842 mils, and attached to spreadsheets appendix to the minutes.
A second for conversation.
Okay, I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by trustee Noel. Questions?
On the general fund recommended budget, you have a, on the bottom, the pages aren't numbered, but there's a contingency fund that was in 2021 of just under 950,000 dollars. On the same page, we have another contingency fund, 101262890000. Contingency fund for 2023 of 1.159363 million dollars. That's 25% of our total budget. What would that be used for?
Give me that account number again.
It says contingency.
Okay.
And under 2023, it's 1,159,000.
Got it. Okay, now, that's under-
General funds.
Revenue.
Yep.
Now, there's an offsetting expense. Where is that at?
That's expense. That's election expense. That's where it's at.
Ah, election expense. That's the line item we have to move.
You should move.
Yes.
But as a fund, a fund balance accounting, it doesn't matter what line it's in.
Whatever, it, it needs, it's a line item that needs to be moved to the elections. What account did it go to?
It should go from here, down to here.
Down to contingency on 101267890000. We're not approving the lines tonight. We, we know that error needs to go down there under the contingency.
101267890?
Yes.
Okay, that makes sense. 2021, you had 950,000-ish, and now we're going up? Okay.
We can make these line items adjustments daily as long as our fund balance, revenue and expenses.
Okay. Thank you.
Trustee Colvin, you had your hand up?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Trustee Charles?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Roll call?
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes, and Supervisor Curtis?
Yes. For item number double I. How do you say that? Roman numeral? Yeah, Roman numeral.
Roman numeral two.
Road Fund, 2042023, balancing with the addition of 100,000 dollars for the road fund that we moved from the general fund. Revenues and expenses balance out at 100,000 dollars. So the motion-
I move to approve the recommended 2023 road fund budget with revenues and expenditure.
Put it back up there, Curtis. Please get a good memory, though.
I was at expenditures. Balancing at 100,000 dollars and attached to spreadsheets appendix to the minutes.
I'll second that. A little late.
I was close.
I have a motion by trustee, by Treasurer Ferrari and trustee Noel. It's been a busy budget month here. Any questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Okay. Fire Department operations. We moved the 300 dollar MERS, 300,000 dollar MERS into the benefits. Is that correct, Danielle?
It was. Give me a moment.
I see, right?
It was in item 206357718000, benefits pension plan, employer share.
Okay, and that's where we added 300,000 dollars to the MERS payout. Okay?
I move to approve the recommended 2023 fire department fund budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at 6,71860, based on the property tax millage rate to be levied at 4.3997 mils, attached to spreadsheets appendix to the minutes.
A second? I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by trustee Noel. Any questions? Seeing none, roll call?
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Okay. Item four, police contracting fund, 2072023 budget. Revenues and expenditures balancing at 3,647,500 dollars for the, excuse me, police fund recommended budget. Any questions? Look for motion?
I move to approve the recommended 2023 police contracting fund budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at 3,647,500, based on the property tax millage rate to be levied at 3.8091 mils, attached to spreadsheet as appendix to the minutes.
Second? I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by trustee Noel. Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call?
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
And trustee Noel?
Yes.
Okay. Item five, Parks and Rec budget. We have revenues and expenditures at 1,655,000,000.
I move to approve the 2023 Parks and Recreation Fund budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at 1,655,000 dollars, based on the property tax millage rate to be levied at 0.9698 mils, attached to spreadsheet as appendix to the minutes.
Second? I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by trustee Noel. Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Item six, Cemetery Maintenance Fund, 2092023 budget, with the addition of the 250,000 dollars. Revenues and expenses balancing at 335,000 dollars.
I move to approve the recommended 2023 Cemetery Maintenance Fund budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at 335,000, attached to spreadsheet as appendix to the minutes.
Second? I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by trustee Noel. Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes. Telecommunications fund.
I move to approve the recommended 2023 telecommunications fund budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at 15,0011, attached to spreadsheet as appendix to the minutes.
Second? I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by trustee Colvin. Rod, any questions? Rod, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, what's the, what's it for?
Telecommunications is money we get back from the state, used for anything in the right of way. So we're, Jack and I are going to work out a next year to get more of the road stuff, taken out of that fund. Anything that's in the right of way. Like when I'm securing easements, technically, I could take it out of the telecommunications fund.
Okay.
If we so chose.
Yeah. And this is a perfect example of a fund that is unallocated or not allocated all the time in the correct manner. We may, we may, we may need an easement for a water main, and we're paying for it out of the general fund, where we could be paying for it out of anything that operates in an easement for the telecommunications fund, we can be taking it out of there.
So this is a good example of what you were describing at the beginning?
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly.
Aren't you glad I asked that?
I'm so glad you asked that. See the elation?
Moving right on. I got building.
Okay, folks, what are we doing?
You're covered.
You made the motion second, roll call, please.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes.
Motion carries. All right, Building Department, you'll see the top line opening fund balance. We took 17,500 dollars as a percent of payroll out of the audited fund balance, put it in the opening fund to operate for wages, benefits, increases for 2023. So in the building department, which runs and pays for itself, we have a balanced budget. Go ahead, Joe.
I move to approve the recommended 2023 Billing Department Fund budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at 396,700, attached to spreadsheets appendix to the minutes.
Second? I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by trustee Noel. Roll call. Oh, any questions? Seeing none, roll call?
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. And trustee Charles?
Yes.
Okay, item number nine, Cable Fund, 296 budget.
I move to approve the recommended 2023 Cable TV Fund budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at 339,437, attached to spreadsheet as appendix to the minutes.
Second? I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by trustee Noel. Are there any questions? Trustee Charles?
When I run through this, there's a disparity between what different communities contribute via franchise fees.
Yeah.
Could you explain that, please, why there is such a significant disparity?
Yes, it's an age-old agreement between more or less a tell from the other communities what they want to do with their franchise fees and peg fees, in-kind fees, all this stuff. And during the course of normal business, we can address why we put so much money in there and why they don't put their fair share in there.
That's really the heart of my question because you used the phrase "fair share", and it seems that we're ye- apparently, it's what a 50% disparity which is significant.
It is.
Just may I help?
Sure.
Over the years, Rod, that's been my biggest complaint with that is we're like the mother hen. We give all of our money, which is fine. You know, but they, everybody contributes different portions with the other participating units. That's always been my issue. Why do we give 100% and they give partial? That's always been the issue. Our board has always thought, it's cable money, give it to cable, which is noble. The other communities have said, well, I'm allowed to keep a portion, so we're going to keep a portion for our general operating. You get what's left over. Too bad.
And what so far I've found is the peg fees you cannot arbitrate. The franchise fees you can arbitrate. Tonight's meeting, we wouldn't be doing that, but we can look into it. And I have been. With Ed Hunwick, who's the chairman of the Cable Commission, and he has brought this up as to why the other communities don't give their fair share. I've been witnessing some emails going back and forth. Pretty much, those townships aren't as blessed with cable users, and they take that money and use it for chloride. They take that money and use it somewhere else. Our fiscal responsibility has been good. We've built our fund balances up and contributed 100% of our pegged franchise fees.
Yeah, I think the issue is, I'm fine with 100%, but the issue would be everybody else doing 50%.
That is an issue, yes. It's an issue that's, should be debated. I would love to have you help us because we are just digging into it now. This is the time of year people take the money from the budget, allocate it in their funds. As you see, we're at 100% and no other community is at that same amount. Why? I can't give you 100% politically correct answer right now because of our, I'm just starting to dig into it. Okay. We had a motion, roll call?
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Charles?
No.
And trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Okay, item 10, Safety Path Fund. You can see where we put the money transferred from the general fund and put it into our contingency. We have capital expenditures coming up on the Safety Path this year. 100,000 dollars really won't address all of them, but it addresses some of them.
I move to approve the recommended 2023 Safety Path Fund budget with revenues and expenditures balancing 100,150, attached to spreadsheet as appendix to the minutes.
Second? I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by trustee Noel. Any questions? Seeing none, roll call?
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
And trustee Noel?
Yes. Item C, Oxford Public Library. Funds balancing at budget 23,143,001.
I move to approve the recommended 2023 Oxford Public Library budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at 1,430,001, and based on the property tax millage rate to be levied at .6271 mils and .6691 mils, equal to 1.2962 mils, attached to spreadsheet as appendix to the minutes.
Second? Motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by trustee Noel. Any questions? Seeing none, roll call?
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
And Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Okay. The next one is North Oakland Transportation Authority, 2023 budget.
Jack, this can be revisited if things change, correct? Or no?
It's, it's going to have to be a, we're, we, we should recommend for approval of this budget.
Just get something in place.
There is a millage that's going to be on the November ballot. That language is, they may refund us if the millage passes, 2 million dollars. And then that would change this budget from 1.8 million up to 2 million. Then it would take the .25 millage from the township and incorporate it in the general millage for the Transit Authority of Oakland County.
This just protects us. You have something on the books.
You have something on the books.
I move to approve the recommended 2023 North Oakland Transportation Authority budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at 1,816,477, and spread the property tax millage rate to be levied at 0.2314 mils, attached to spreadsheet as appendix to the minutes.
Second? I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by trustee Noel. Are there any questions? Yes, or trustee Charles?
Here again, I'm redundant on some of the statements you've made, but I want to make sure I'm hearing this right. So if this proposed millage thing goes through for this-
Oakland County?
Oakland County thing, we would get 2 million dollars.[1787.22]
Proposed, yes.
Not 1.8, we'd get 2 million bucks?
Correct.
So we make a few bucks on the deal, apparently?
Correct.
Okay. And then you said .25 mils, and this is .23 mils?
I'm sorry, .23.
So we, this, it would remain the .23, or how does that work?
No, we go up to .95, they give us .23 back, and the rest goes to the county.
Yes.
Repetitive play? Say that again, Joe?
That's what happens, is we'll get us made whole, but the other .75 will be a donor.
Our millage would not be?
The township would get the same, but the, the residents would pay more.
Correct.
Correct.
For our service plus.
Okay.
I don't know what the plus is.
Well, roughly 6.5% tax increase to township residents if this proposal passes.
Yes.
Just give or take a few decimal points.
Yes.
As I try to lower down the Parks and Rec bond debt as low as I can get it.
That's why we have, uh, this budget approved, so that if the millage fails, we would have this one in place and the taxing millage in place. If it passes, this would be amended, and then we would be into the other millage.
It's kind of a shell game, except our shell is going to be a lot bigger as far as a taxpayer. I get it, okay.
Yes.
What's that quote from Senator Dirksen? A billion here and a billion there, and pretty soon you're talking real money?
Pretty soon. Just don't want to even talk about today. Pollyanna Trail Management Council budget.
Need a vote.
We need a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, roll call. I thought we did, I lost myself.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
I like how you moved that around. I didn't know you had.
I move to approve the recommended 2023 Pollyanna Trailway Management Council Fund budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at 80,000, attached a spreadsheet as appendix of the minutes.
Second? I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Noel. Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes.
Okay, uh, Treasurer Ferrari, you want to set the 2023 Parks and Ret, Parks and Recreation debt millage rate?
Correct. I move to set the Parks and Recreation 2023 debt millage rate at point, excuse me, 0.205 of a mil authorized to be placed in the December 2022 tax roll.
Second? I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Noel. Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes, and Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Setting the 2023 millage rates form, L4029. Treasurer Ferrari?
I move the following millage rates to be levied and collected December 1, 2022. The general property tax on all real and personal property within the township upon the current tax roll and allocated millage of 0.8842 of a mil for township operations, and vote authorized millage of 0.9698 of a mil for Parks and Recreation, 3.8091 mils for police contracting, unincorporated portion of the township only, 4.3997 mils for fire operations EMS, advanced life support, 0.6271 of a mil, and 0.6691 of a mil for Oxford Public Library, 0.2314 of a mil for North Oakland Transportation Authority, and 0.205 of a mil for Parks and Recreation bond debt.
Second? I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Noel. Any questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
No.
Clerk Wright, yes. Uh, Trustee Charles?
Yes.
And Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, public comment at this time? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Brian Klut here, trustee for County Community Foundation. Um, I just wanted to thank, um, the work and effort put in by, uh, the township and our, um, uh, grant writer as well in securing, uh, the donor that, uh, submitted the matching funds needed to create a local fund at the foundation, uh, for Oxford. Um, it's a great, uh, time for us to have this fund here. It's much needed and, uh, a long time overdue, so I'm grateful for everybody, including our donor who contributed, uh, to that fund. Thank you so much.
Any other public comment at this time? Seeing none. Board of trustees comments. I'm going to start with Trustee Colvin.
I just want to, um, echo your thoughts about having a workshop. I think it could be extremely valuable, um, to get input from everybody, every department, on, on what they see is the most valuable way to spend their funds. And, and if you need a volunteer to be on the committee, I'd like to volunteer myself, so.
Thank you. Trustee Noel, did you write that down? Volunteer?
It's in comments.
The Pollyanna Trail has their 25th celebration, along with the Oxford Women's Club. They're teaming up. There's a walk in the celebration. There'll be cake there for you board members who enjoy cake on Saturday at 9 o'clock from 9 till noon. Hope to see you there. Treasurer Ferrari?
I thought the budgets were very well done. I understand the whole workshop idea, but I thought they were well done, presented in a good fashion. I was good with it. That's all I had.
Trustee Charles? Clerk Wright?
Uh, just, I was just going to say, uh, Trustee Noel said, but, uh, no, for the comments.
Okay. My only comment is, I want to, uh, thank Danielle for putting up with me and everybody through this process. Um, we, we have to have a workshop, a true workshop, prior to us moving money from the general fund. It just can't be people, one person's idea to move it. It should be talked about and explained. I can look at our general fund and know that we did this right and correctly. And I had to explain it to Clerk Wright, trustee, Treasurer Ferrari, and probably some of the trustees that I talked to about our fund balances and what we're doing. It's critical that our fire department form a capital expenditure or capital investment group that recommends your fire truck purchases, uh, your apparatus purchases, so that we know where we are and what we can plan and budget for. Danielle and I worked a month. I could not understand why we don't have in our budget an opening fund balance, because we have a million dollars from ARPA, A R P A. It doesn't show in our budget. It doesn't show it because our committee hasn't recommend expenditures. This is the first year we're recommending payroll increases be budgeted. They were never done that way. And they were done in a fashion that you told employees you were getting this much. You were the best of the worst, or worst of the best. You've got that amount of money. Our new performance pay evaluation, uh, I think is going to go real smooth. Our committee will review it. The department heads will offer suggestions. We should have enough money to do it. The remaining funds will move forward. Danielle, I thank you. Clerk Wright, I thank you. Treasurer Ferrari, and the rest of the trustees. We went through horrific hours of budget preparation, trying to get this into an understandable format. Um, this is a long way from where we were a few years ago. So, to that, uh, we look forward to our volunteers for a capital expenditure committee and anybody else. We are going to be moving forward in a more structured fashion, knowing where our money's at, where we can explain it when, and our taxation rates will be set based on what we need. So, thank you, everybody.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Colvin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed can stay here by themselves.
Jack, I'm sorry.